And we don't know whether we're on the air because nobody has a... Peyton, you're in charge of that TV, by the way.
We're on it.
We're on the air?
Wave at me.
Three and two, high fastball.
Wave, wave, wave at me.
He can't hear that. I don't think he can hear that. Okay.
Are we on the air now?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to call the ZBA Board Meeting Four, August 18th, at 7:03. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to start out with reviewing the minutes of July 14. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of July 14?
Just checking, see what I have.
Motion to accept the minutes of July 14, 2008.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any, is there any discussion on those minutes?
Let me just take one look. The 14 July meetings. I don't think I had any. I had nothing on the July 14 minutes.
Erica, would you do the roll call for July's 14 minutes?
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of August 4th of 2008?
Motion to accept the minutes of August 4th, 2008.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
None? Erica, roll call on the minutes of August 4th, please.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
I'm not sure I was even here. I've stayed, I was not here.
We should take the minutes of June 30th, which are never done. But I've got some corrections on it.
I don't even have a copy with me. I don't even have a copy. How come those weren't done? That's quite a while ago.
But I know we haven't, we haven't accepted minutes.
Do we have the minutes, Peyton, on the June 30th?
I'm looking.
Actually, you know what? It might be in here. No, I don't have them either. I don't have them either.
You want to hang up one of them?
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Benson, would you please make a note that we need to approve the minutes of June 30th, so that Sue will have that tomorrow, because none of us have that. Will you approve the minutes for the 18th, right, already? Yeah. Okay. So I put that up there?
Before, before.
Yeah, okay. And do you have, I have this right here, okay. Before, I'm not going to read that tonight. We don't need to do that. All right. Okay, our regular business this evening is, I'm going to turn this over to our vice chair, because I was not here for that last meeting, so the vice chair will, I believe you folks are ready to hear the variances, talk about those, so at this point, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Joyce?
This evening, we had a continuation of the public hearing for a variance from the Brand Development Company of New Hampshire LLC, reference sections 303, 304, and the dimensional table of the New Market zoning ordinance. The applicant requests a variance to permit renovation, reconfiguration, and reconstruction of the four existing structures on the property into two separate structures containing a combined total of six residential units. The lot is located at Five Spring Street, tax map U2, Lot 40, Zone M2. The complete application is available to view at the zoning office at the town hall during regular business hours. And before we go into it, I want the attorney to know that we only have four voting members tonight, and you have-
We understand that, Mr. Vice Chairman. Chris Bolt, for the record, Donahue Tucker Chindela. I understand Mr. Quinlan's health is not allowing him to be here, and rather than forestall any further, I think it's, we can accept your four, four sitting members.
Thank you. Now, if any of the members have any more questions for the public and attorney, as we have not closed the public hearing, they can speak now if there's any new information that wasn't made available at the meeting, or else I'll close it, if there's any new man, in information.
I'm here to answer your questions. I did recall one misstatement that I had made. I believe I had switched the floor layout for the reconstruction renovation of the back building. I think I had, which way is the right way?
You had three and three.
It's three and three, it's just, but I had described it being two on top and one on bottom, and it's supposed-
That's actually the correct description.
I had had it two on the bottom and one on top. So the correct way is there will be two units on top and one unit on bottom in what we're, what's currently the middle building.
Well, what we're interested in is in density of six.
Correct. That is, that is the set.
So, at this point, then I'll close the public hearing, and we're going-
Sorry, just walk in.
I've opened a public hearing, if anybody had any new information that wasn't heard at the last meeting, they could come up and speak, and if they didn't, then I'd close the public hearing.
All set, thank you.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go right into the variances. And I'll read the variances and that I've put up, that variance will not be contrary to the public interest. You want to make a motion to do them?
I'll make a motion that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. It's a statement of fact that granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, as the proposed redevelopment of the site is consistent with the master plan, which encourages quality, thoughtful development that preserves our natural resources and enhances the aesthetics of New Market while creating a long-term tax base. Furthermore, as this property is located in the M2 district, the purpose of the zoning ordinance in this district shall be to protect and enhance the commercial, social, civic, and residential functions of the downtown village area. It is recognized that the village is an important place of business and of social interaction. Controls are intended to enhance the village by providing for relatively high density, a mix of uses, public access to the Lamprey River, and design compatible with the pedestrian scale and historic nature of the area. The applicant's proposed redevelopment will better meet the above-stated objectives than are currently being achieved with the existing conditions of the property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Then Erica, call the roll.
I have one quick question, because Michael Watson needs to be appointed.
That's right.
What's that?
You guys are going to, you're going to appoint me?
No, I don't, because it's a continuing meeting. You were appointed at the last meeting. It's a continu-, huh?
Can you just repeat that?
Yeah, well, he was appointed at the last meeting, and it's a continuation.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two, special conditions exist that the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship, and the applicants are seeking the BOSHA analysis. An area variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property.
So moved.
You have to read it.
It's a statement of fact that special conditions exist relating to the property located at Five Spring Street. The property is boarded on the north by Property of April, to the south by a driveway shared by the applicant and the owners of properties of seven and seven and a half Spring Street, and to the west by Spring Street. There are multiple structures in the property, including one building with five rental units, two garages, and disrepair, and a non-conforming vacant building adjacent to Spring Street and shown on the tax card as one unit. The non-conforming building is located close to Spring Street property line and does not meet the five-foot front yard setback of the M2 district. By granting the variance, the applicant will remove the garages and the non-conforming building adjacent to Spring Street, but due to the lot size and configuration, the new building will need to encroach into, into the 10-foot side setback on the north side abutting the property of the Aprils. This north side setback of the new building will be on or about where the non-conforming building to be removed is now located. However, it will meet the 10-foot side setback to the south and the five-foot front yard setback on Spring Street, as required in the M2 district. Thereby, the proposed renovation reconfiguration appears to be a unique way to achieve a new building arrangement that reduces nonconformity while improving the property as envisioned in the master plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll, Erica.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance.
It's a statement of fact that the applicant has shown that the density of six units and location of the two buildings are needed to accomplish the proposed redevelopment, and without the variance, the proposed renovation and reconfiguration of the property is not economically feasible, and the property will most likely continue to remain in its present mixed-use deteriorating condition. Due to the limitations of the property, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Erica, take the roll.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye. Three, the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
It's a statement of fact, the purpose of the M2 district shall be to protect and enhance the commercial, social, civic, and residential functions of the downtown village area. Controls are intended to enhance the village by providing for relatively high density, a mix of uses, public access to the Lamprey River, and design compatible with the pedestrian scale and historic nature of the area. By granting the requested variances, the applicant will have the opportunity to renovate, reconfigure, and reconstruct the four existing structures on the property into two separate structures. Whereas the front structure will meet the front setback, vehicles will be shielded from the roadway. These improvements are consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Erica, call the roll.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, substantial justice is done.
It's a statement of fact that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by gain to the general public is an injustice. By granting of the variances, the property will be greatly improved, and both the applicant and the town as a whole will be better served. Thereby, substantial justice is done.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Erica.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye. Number five, the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished.
It's a statement of fact that the property currently services five units in one building, one additional nonconforming building which is vacant, and two existing garages and disrepair. And by allowing the applicant to utilize his property as desired, the property would greatly, be greatly improved and more consistent with surrounding properties in the M2 district. Upon completion of the proposed improvements to the applicant's property, the surrounding properties would suffer no diminution in value, but rather the redevelopment of the site would enhance surrounding property values.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one thing. This is for the board. If, if there's not room for those rear parking places, for them to back out without-
That's a planning board issue.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a planning board issue.
The planning board, yeah. They'll take care of that.
All set?
Yep.
Call the roll.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye. Now, the finding of fact-
Finding of fact, having met the five prongs of the criterion, a motion is made to grant the applicant's request for a variance from sections 3.03 and 3.04 in the dimensional table of the New Market zoning ordinance to permit the encroachment on the northerly side of the lot line into the 10-foot side setback of the new proposed building, and the total density of six units with the following conditions. One, it shall be the sole responsibility of the applicant to maintain the shared right-of-way of Five, Seven, and Seven and a Half Spring Street. This condition shall be shown on all future documents. Two, as this property is adjacent to the historical district, although not required, it is recommended that the applicant meet with the Advisory Heritage Committee for their input. And three, the installation of signage on Access Drive denoting private access. This lot is located at Five Spring Street, tax map U2, Lot 40, Zone M2. Respectfully submitted, Rosanne Cox and Richard Chell.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to call the roll.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Aye. You know, attorney, you have 30 days-
Thank you, sir.
For appeal.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
Very much.
Okay. And do you have one for Erica?
Can I have that?
Okay. Chris, you want a copy of the-
Yes, I wasn't sure if I'd get it now, or we'd get it with the notice of decision.
He'll give you this now for your record.
Thank you.
Give one to Erica, do what Erica-
No, I'm not going there. I'm not going there. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
You're welcome.
I have a gun, I'm going to set the timer.
I'm going to go out as fast as I can.
About a half ahead. It hasn't hit my bloodstream yet.
Okay, let's move on. We have, before we actually do that, I need to get, Sue's been asking me to do this. We had a discussion a couple of months ago, like you weren't here, that the administrative Susan Jordan would like to increase the cost of certi-, the certified letters, because the cost of posters has gone up, and they're just not even breaking even at this point. So, this board, she's asking to give approval to allow her to do that, because the planning board has to do it, the council has to do it, and she has asked a couple of times to me to mention that, and I keep on forgetting to mention it. So tonight, I guess I'll take a motion to recommend to Sue to increase the fees to a level where-
Help with the cost.
Yeah, help with the cost, yeah. And probably keep it in line with the rest of-
Well, council approved some, well, they, we approved copying and-
Well, she's just talking-
We didn't do, we didn't do-
This is mailing?
Yeah, this is just mailing.
Mailing.
Yeah, just mailing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the charges compatible with the other boards to cover the cost.
That's good.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Richard Chell?
Aye.
Dana Glennon? Aye.
Did you ask Mike?
He hasn't been appointed.
Oh, he was, okay.
Oh, it ended at the end of when we approved.
Um-
So we have to appoint him, and then-
I'll have some air back in.
Going to appoint him for this, what's coming up here, for this year.
No, not necessarily, because we had that conversation, remember?
Yeah.
That's what I'm going to think about before I say anything here. Yeah, okay. Mike, I'm going to appoint you to this next discussion, because it won't just be tonight. However, you'll have to brush yourself up and read the material, so on and so forth. Now, what happens if Scott comes back?
What we're going to be discussing is, is only the condition, not, not, not the whole case.
I've already been there, done that, I know that, and we're going to make that very clear tonight.
And what will be, what, what, the only thing that will be before us is what's discussed that night as like all new information.
If Scott's not here that night, then you still continue. But if he's here, then obviously Scott will be the one, right now, for discussion tonight. I don't even know if we have to appoint him tonight, because he hasn't been here for this at all, so why appoint him? We're just appointing him in the next meeting.
Only to make a vote. We got a voting up and down tonight.
Well, I was here for-
Yeah, sure you were.
Presentation of, I was here for the rehearing.
Oh, yeah.
For the rehearing, you were here, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, I will appoint you. He's, he'll be appointed tonight, Erica. Okay. Poor Erica, it's like, what's going on? Okay. What we have before us, so we received a letter from Susan Rice of, let me just go back here, 282 Middle Street LLC, consideration of requests for rehearing regarding a lot located at 71 Packers Falls Road, tax pa-, tax map U1, Lot 22, Zone R1. As Mrs., Ms. Rice's letter, let me see here, dated August 12th, which I am not going to read at all, but it does clearly show there were some errors that this board, um-
There were some technical issues that weren't correct.
Technical, more technical, yeah, yeah, that needed to be addressed. And we need to make a decision this evening if this board is willing to make, somebody making a motion to rehear this. And just so everybody's clear, the vice chair, myself, the town planner, and Sue Jordan, we had a conference call on Friday afternoon with our attorney, well, it's not, it's Walter Mitchell, that's who we spoke with, out of Laconia. And I'm just going to read what he has sent to me, and I think the board all has a copy of this. And when, if we should take a vote tonight on this, it's going to be just on hearing the conditions of the, what's the word I'm trying to say here? The rehearing on the conditions of approval.
Just one condition of approval.
Well, it says two, but there's really only one.
Yeah, there's one.
Right. So, that's what we have to decide. We're not going to rehear the whole case, and there will be no public hearing. It was just the board to rehear the conditions of approval. All right. Now, letter states here to, to me Friday afternoon, August 15th, at 4:48 PM. Dana, thanks for your call and for discussing your concerns about a motion for rehearing that the ZBA has received. I understand that the underlying hearing was on the request, on the question of whether to grant an extension of a condition on the earlier grant of a variance. The original condition allowed only six months for the, for the applicant to also gain approval from planning board, and the applicant was, again, before your board, seeking extension. Correct? Okay. I understand that the extension was denied by a vote of two to two. As there were only four regular members present, one who has participated in the grant all the variants, the applicant has now submitted a motion for rehearing, raising nine claims of error, and while you personally do not agree with many of them, you have expressed concerns about the lack of a full board having been available, especially in the light of how the vote turned out, and the fact that upon denial, the members voting to deny refuse to state reasons such as reasons are required to be given by RSA 676 colon three dash, I think that's an I. Either or both of these concerns are valid reasons to grant a rehearing if the board votes to do so. The rehearing presumably, then with five members, would be limited to the extension of the time period question, and would not be going back to whether the variance should have been granted in the first place. Please let me know if you have any further questions. Walter Mitchell, Mitchell Municipal Government, PA, 25 Beacon Street East, Laconia, New Hampshire, 038246. So, the other item that was discussed, you, there is no RSA out there that says that you have to have a five-member board, or that you have to offer the applicant to have a five-member board. There's nothing there, so that was the only thing that came, because that wasn't done, that wouldn't be grounds to rehear this. However, we're going to put that into the mix, because normally we do that, but it's not an RSA request. However, according to Mr. Mitchell, because there was, on these two reasons, he's saying the others are not applicable, these two reasons, well, actually, there was another one, but he stated these two, that we have to give a reason when you deny. So, there's a negative vote on that. So, with that being said, I would like to reschedule this-
We got a vote on it for us.
Yeah, I know, but I also want to throw a date out there to have you think about.
September 8th.
Is that a good date for you?
It's a good date for me. You ain't going to have it the first, that's Labor Day.
So, does somebody want to make a motion to rehear this on the grounds of the two-
I'll make a motion that due to the technical inconsistencies, I'll make a motion to grant the rehearing at a time specific, and if September 8th, 2008, at 7:00 PM is agreeable at all, that would be a good date.
Would you like to include, just for everybody's knowledge, that it is specifically applies to just the condition?
Yes, what he just said.
Okay.
Yeah, you said that, right?
I said the technical inconsistencies.
Yeah, relating to-
For a rehearing on the condition.
Right, on the, on, on the condition. The condition of approval, what they're requesting, obviously.
And maybe you want to say that motion is not to rehear the whole case.
Well, the lawyer's already told you.
Yeah, I know, yes, yeah. Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Roll call.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Rosanne Cox?
Aye.
Richard Chell?
Aye.
Dana Glennon? Aye. The eighth.
Yes.
Do-
What?
Do you want to talk about having four members versus five, that issue?
We don't know if we're going to have five or four.
Well, just in case we only have four, is that-
No, you do that at the time of the commitment. Yeah. Uh, 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 uh. Go ahead. I'm sorry. You got to come up to the podium, though.
I'm assuming, well, for the record, my name is Susan Rice, representing 282 Middle Street LLC. I'm assuming that this is going to be a public hearing? No. The abutters are not going to be notified?
No, my understanding with the attorney, they don't have to be notified.
They do not have to be notified.
No, that's why we're not going to rehear the whole case.
It'll be posted.
It'll be posted?
It will be posted, two places in town, newspaper-
Through three or whatever, yeah.
Okay. Some towns do two, some do three, depends on which town, right?
He said we didn't have to send letters to the abutter, but we had to repost it in two public places.
This portion was posted tonight, right? Did the abutters get notified on this rehearing tonight?
It was posted, yes. No, no.
It was posted, but the-
They don't get-
Okay.
Any certified letters, no.
For, for this, okay.
That's all I, don't they only get it for the original?
Right.
Everything else is continuation, basically.
Right, yeah.
And the public hearing's been closed, and everything, and she's only writing a letter on the conditions of approval that were denied, but no reason.
So-
I just want to make sure that, you know, if there's something on my part that I need to do in terms of providing names, addresses, the fees, whatever, I do not want to get here on the eighth...
Right.
And say, oh, we should have noticed abutters. I, I just don't want to go through...
In our conversation, Sue, on Friday, we asked those questions.
Okay.
And we were told no. However, what I'm going to do, just to clarify that, I'll ask Sue to send a memo off to you.
Okay.
So you'll have that.
I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the due diligence that the sport has given me.
Okay.
Okay.
And my apologies for the mix-up, and hopefully we'll get this behind us.
I, I just want to say, I want to thank this board for the, all of its due diligence that it has afforded me with this case. And I always look at things that we're all human beings and we all have to work together. And I don't play the blame game. It serves no purpose. And I respect the things that this board tries to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what was the comment to Susan?
Have asked Sue to send up a memo to Susan Rice regarding our conversation on Friday with attorney Mitchell, that the abutters do not need to be notified. As far as we know right now, there's no additional information that she needs to bring, but just going to rehear the conditions of approval.
Period.
Yeah.
Like a single condition.
Right. And hold on, Peyton has some. No.
Okay. No, my question is, will it, will the meeting be reopened to the public or will it be strictly within the board?
Within the board.
Okay.
In fact, that was recommended by the attorney. We do not have to do that, so we're not going to do it. And if she would, I'll, I'll be in tomorrow to sign it. I got to come in tomorrow for a meeting, so I can do that tomorrow. Thank you, Dan. All right. Is there any other business?
Since I'm appointed, do I need to vote on the postage or it screws it up? I don't care, but I didn't.
You should.
Yeah.
I just don't want to, you have to do it again.
No, you wouldn't have to do postage again. I'm sure it's not a biggie.
Okay. I don't, I don't care.
No, we put you in. You said yes, remember?
Did I? Okay.
You know what? That motion's not been voted on at all.
Which one?
The postage.
I only thought we did.
I thought we did.
I...
He made the motion, he seconded it, and I thought we all voted on it.
He may seconded it, then we didn't vote on it?
No.
Well, we got a vote on it.
Vote on the motion...
On the postage.
On the postage.
That it would be compatible with the other boards.
Yeah. It would be compatible with other boards.
Peyton Carr?
Aye.
Michael Watson?
Aye.
Roseanne Cox?
Aye.
Richard Chell?
Aye.
Aye, twice. I think we did, but I don't know. Maybe we didn't. Okay.
Not, has this been discussed among the council member? I mean, I don't know at all what's the basis, other than just postage. Is there, are there other considerations that should possibly be taken as far as raising the, the application fees in general?
Oh, no, no, we haven't, no. That would be a recommendation coming from either Mr. Vincent or Diane, but no. We're just going to do the postage because it did increase on May something, I don't know, May 12th or something like that. But not just the 41 to the 42 cents.
Everything.
The certified, the, all of those were way up. They were something like 60 cents, maybe? Do you have an idea how much it went up?
Not, but I know that it's expensive.
Yeah, it's very expensive now. So, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good meeting.